To.
No.
Okay.
So I just need to remember what we do. I think it's just a. For neither the Chair or Vice Chair can participate, the Commission shall elect a Commissioner to serve as the temporary Chairperson. So, any volunteers or recruitment suggestions to who wants to be the ad hoc Chairperson for tonight?
Greg can do it. I nominate Greg. How's that?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, we got it.
Right.
Ron Gray.
Well, since it's 7:03, we better get this meeting to order. So I guess we can call for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all. Alright. So it's nice to see everyone here. I take it there's no topics from the floor? Okay, discussion items. Mr. Jacob?
We need to go back to item two consent agenda for the minutes.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. So can the Senate agenda of the Planning Commission minutes?
I move we accept them.
Second.
It's been moved to second to accept the Commission minutes from the September 8th, 2020 meeting. Call in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Proved unanimously. Now we can get on to discussion item for Oregon House Bill 2001.
Yes.
Jacob?
So, thank you. I'm gonna go show you a presentation here, but the first thing, so in the July Planning Magazine, it actually talked about some cities who are tackling this issue. And if we go back to the early 20th century where a lot of our case laws developed zoning as we have today. One of those classics one, classic ones are from 1926, the Village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty Co. And you may have heard me talk about Euclidian zoning, which is typically what we have. And for a long time, the single-family dwelling has been king. It's reigned supreme. And even back then, the court called apartments near single-family homes nuisances and a mere parasite. Well, that's changed a lot. And you have a lot of large cities tackling this issue. The city of Minneapolis kind of looked at it. Seattle has started to look at it for some areas, Austin, those are all big cities. But then Oregon has done an even much bigger thing that affects us, and that's what we're talking about tonight. So I'm gonna share my screen while I keep talking here. Just give me a second. Okay. So we're just gonna stare at this logo for an hour and see if you have any ideas. Start. I'm just kidding. We do have someone who wants to enter. Christina, can you see if they?
Are they german?
Yeah. So we don't have some of the interesting, though distracting things that happened before. Whoops. I can't get that off my. Okay, well, that waiting room thing totally screwed me up. But I'll get back on track here.
Nice little tour, Jacob.
The the black Adobe icon at the bottom is what you're looking for. Yeah. And then I think you can get it full screen. Yeah. Cool.
Okay. So. First of all, there are two sources of this that we can look at. One is the House Bill. This was adopted in July of last year. And it says that medium cities defined as between 10,000 and 25,000, or around 13,000, 14,000. So we count this House Bill applies to us. And so basically, it means that we are obligated to allow duplexes anywhere we allow single-family dwellings. And so, single-family dwellings will no longer reign supreme. And when we consider all the types of amendments that we're looking at, this is something required to be done by June 30th of next year. And so it's something we want to start working on right of way. Now, we don't have to, we can sit around and be like, well, we don't have to do anything. And if we did that, then the Oregon's MODO code would take over. But there's some interesting things about that MODO code, especially in regards to parking, that will probably make you think, well, we should probably adopt our standards. Aside from having to look at the MODO code and our code would just be a big inefficient disaster. And so staff certainly recommends adopting something. But that's the first question. I'm gonna be asking you several questions about, well, how should we steer the ship? And that's the first one. And you can answer that at the end if you want. The other source that we can look at is our own Housing Needs Analysis. And that was adopted last year. And we had a few goals in there. One, to look at cottage clusters. And early in this year, I was hoping to tackle duplexes and cottage clusters at the same time. But it was a busy year, and that just didn't happen. So I think we're gonna look at cottage clusters later on, once we get the duplex stuff figured out. And another one, which was interesting in the Housing Needs Analysis, was to consider allowing duplexes in our seven-zoned land. And the Planning Commission was a little resistant on, you know, allowing duplexes more than we do now. But now we have the House Bill, which forces it even more. So that's the issue. But anyways, so we have the state saying something, and then we also have our own adopted Housing Needs Analysis saying something. And that's why we put time in this, and we're talking about it today. So, we always gotta talk about zoning, right? That's the first thing. So this next slide, here's our zoning map. Has all of our pretty colors showing this different zoning districts. I wanted to have this here in case we needed to go back and re-reference it, but it just gives you an idea of what we have going on. You know, on this side, the east side of town, here's the highway, you have a whole lot of R5 zoning. And then but as well as the majority of our R10 zoning up here just south of Dalton Lake. And then on the other side of town, you have quite a bit of R7 zoning. This used to be R7, but it's R5, as some of you know, Emerald Meadows. Anyways, so zoning districts. And if we look at the zoning districts and look at all the residential uses, this is how it breaks down. This is something we're gonna be using for our cottage clusters. If you noted, I put cottage cluster down here, and it's not allowed in any zoning districts because we just don't have rules yet, and we hope to fix that within a couple of years. But here's duplex highlighted. And we can see that in the R10 zone, it's not allowed at all. In the R7 zone, it's allowed by conditional use permit. They are permitted in our two highest density zones, R5 and our apartment residential, but then our manufactured home residential zoning, which is not very common at all. I think the only place zone that is Crestwood, duplexes are allowed by condition to use permit. So this is an interesting slide, if you really wanna geek out on all the residential uses and how they're allowed by our zoning districts. Any questions on this one before we move on? None. Okay. So then, what does this House Bill mean? Well, it means when we look at up here, so first, I guess what I, I should tell you what I did. So we kinda have to look at manufactured homes, stick-built detached single-family dwellings, and duplexes on equal terms now. And if we look at our standards currently, especially with our core residential zoning here, you see that detached single-family dwellings and manufactured homes are on even keel, but when we talk about duplexes, well, there's some differences there. And according to this House Bill, it needs to be even Steven all the way around. So these not allowed and conditionally allowed all turning to permitted uses. The mixed-use zoning districts aren't affected, and then our non-residential zoning districts aren't affected either. So that's one change. Not really something to discuss. This is pretty much forced. So.
Just, Jacob, did you find out whether or not covenants and restrictions or HOA rules, how it affects this new House Bill, or is affected by it?
Um, I remember seeing some stuff on that in incidental readings. It's not something I focused on, but so we can't impose it. And my suspicion is that that law will make legal challenges difficult for homeowners associations to enforce.
Yeah.
But that's, like I said, not something I researched clearly. I just, I kinda remember reading something a while back.
Okay.
Jacob, how does this affect the historic district?
Well, that's a good question. So if we go back to our zoning map. Now, our historic district is around here, and the historic district does have some residential zoning in it. And as far as the individually listed buildings, they're still subject to our historic protections and standards for how they appear and stuff like that. Where we have standards to shape the area visually, we're talking about our riverfront district. And that, and we're talking about this kind of lime green color down here. And if we look at the zoning standards, and we look at the riverfront district, we can see that because detached single-family dwellings are not allowed currently, and duplexes are not allowed, they're not affected. And that's important because when we're talking about these kind of residential uses, we have to have clear and objective standards that apply to them. And some would argue that some architectural standards are not necessarily clear and objective. And so not allowing them in these zoning districts helps keep us out of hot water. Of course, ideally, you'd wanna have someone who wants it to look good, but sometimes you just never know.
Okay.
So yeah, our historic districts shouldn't be substantially affected by this, other than may, maybe incidental parking if everybody, you know, wants to build a duplex. And just because these rules are being required of us, doesn't mean every lot's gonna turn into a duplex. But certainly, over time, you may see more because, you know, it's just, people are intimidated by permits and rules. And when we say, well, it's not much, other than a dwelling, you're gonna have people who probably wanna go after that.
Well, from the, from the description that, from the examples that we received from the DLCD, they don't even look like duplexes because they're unattached. So the term duplexes may be a misnomer as far as, basically, these are just small, gonna be small individual homes.
Well, Mr. Cohen, you're jumping the gun on me into our next topic, actually.
I'm sorry.
No, it's a, it's a great segue because that's what I was gonna talk about next.
Jacob, where does townhouses fit in then? Are they considered a duplex or what?
A townhouse? It depends on your definition of a townhouse. Usually, we would call that attached single-family dwellings where you have a smaller lot, but the individual units are separated by a property line and a fire-rated wall. And those are not impacted by these regulations.
Okay.
So for example, we'll see a lot of those at the Greystone subdivision up by the DMV, and those are not impacted. You notice on here, we're not talking about attached single-family dwellings.
Right.
Only detached. So, so those are, those still matter, but they're not affected by what we're talking about. But that's, it's a good question. So what in the heck is a duplex? What are we gonna define them as?
We're all waiting with bated breath. Oh, there you go.
It's part of, I have to do stuff to add to anticipation in these kind of meetings. Alright, so our code currently says that they are two dwelling units attached. So our code would allow this type or this type, or some other method of attachment. Our code won't allow this. Now, if we do nothing and let the MODO take over, then we are mandated to allow both as a duplex. But if, if we're looking at adopting our own rules, we do have the ability to choose, to stay with what we have or to allow these detached units. And so this is one of the first big questions for the Commission. And so my, the idea is get some feedback from the Commission tonight, bring this to the Council in early November, and then kind of go from there. And so this is one of the first big questions for you is, do we stay with the attached model, or do we allow these to be detached? Now, one thing I'd like to say about that is, if we allow the detached duplex, then our ADU rules will become pretty much worthless.
Right.
If, if we don't, the ADU rules would still allow the detached type. But they would be prob, more or less pointless, because why would you get a permit, although it's an easy permit and cheap, when you don't have to, you can just call it a duplex and not be restricted by size?
This is like those tiny houses that they put on lot, you know, one lot in Portland. Put three or four on it.
Yeah, that's cottage clusters, and that's something that.
Yeah.
What about setback? Is that gonna change?
Um, it is something that we needed to talk about, and we'll talk about that pretty, pretty soon. Because they have to be, we can't treat duplexes differently. So with what we apply to single-family dwellings, we can't apply a more restrictive standard to duplexes. And so we are gonna have to modify our yard standards. Now, if you did go with this detached type, then it's a question of, you know, do you have some type of spacing standard in between buildings?
So Jacob, with all that being said, what differentiates a duplex from, say, a granny house? In the old days, we used to think of duplexes as rental units. Are they still considered under that definition?
They would be two units on the same property. And so one would assume, so on the same property, so you can't have disparate ownership between the two units. So one would assume at least one unit would be a rental, if not both.
Okay. So, so that, that definition remains in the, in the new law? That at least that they remain under the same ownership?
Yes, yeah. Two, so two dwelling units per lot. The question here, is it two dwelling units that are attached? Can't break them apart, or do you allow two, two on the lot? Here. So this is the first important question that I'm hoping to get some feedback on. And if you're, and if your feedback is, well, you don't care, well, then.
So give us.
I think they need to be attached, and the other is just seed for a cluster.
I don't like this whole idea anyway. Not a big fan of this new rule. I think they should be attached.
Well.
How do you get to?
Can you give us pros and cons of being attached or detached?
Um, detached, it's two tiny homes on a lot.
How do you get to an attached buildings on a 700 square foot property?
Well, and that would be that you'd have to meet all your standards. I, I think the, the advantage of the attached is you, you would have more, you would have a better possibility of air, light, and space between properties. And arguably, more efficient use of the land, as well as energy, because you're sharing.
One side.
You're sharing at least a side, whereas the detached, it adds creativity to people's housing options. But yeah, it could be a more dispersed land use on the landscape.
Are we allowed to say that they have to match architecturally or anything? I mean, I, I would hate to see somebody go, yeah, the easiest way to make it a duplex is to pull in a manufactured home in our backyard.
Our ADU rules do have standards like that. And that would be, so that would be one of your justifications, is if you, if you keep them attached, the probability of them looking, having similar architectural features is pretty dang good. But if you let them be detached, and we don't have standards like the ADU. So the ADU standards talks about similar trim, window features, roof pitch, and stuff like that. And I think that would be your argument for keeping the duplex detached and keeping the ADU as the two detached. At least one of the arguments.
I agree with that.
So in the, in the new rules, or the definition of attached, does it have to be a wall, or could it be a breezeway?
It, it could be a breezeway.
Is there a way that we can prevent that, that in our code, that if we're gonna stay with, it has to be attached, that it has to be a common wall?
Sure, yeah, we could say common wall.
Yeah, it needs to have a shared wall.
Face state mount muster?
I, I believe so.
Because I don't wanna get into the same problem we found with the, whether it was a car connected to a building, or was it, or was detached because of, there was a breezeway there.
Yeah, 70 feet of breezeway.
Exactly.
I think Jennifer missed that one.
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, I did miss that one.
The giant breezeway, that was a pretty good one.
A roller coaster.
Okay, must have shared wall, keep attached.
Of course, you can imagine I had a lot of highlights in that goal five section. Has it mentioned under, under the second page where it says goal 5A, natural resources, scenic, and historic areas, it's discussing that? And I know you already kind of mentioned historic district.
Yeah, and I don't remember that very well. I, I read this several weeks ago when I was figuring stuff out, but I don't think, we'll, we'll touch upon that a little bit, but I don't think that affects us as much. But if we wanna look at those statutes and dive in towards the end, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions about it when you guys are ready.
One of the, Jacob, one of the things I was curious about was on, well, these aren't numbered, but they talked about implementing of the middle housing ordinance, and talked about fees and waiving or deferring system development charges, and adopting or amending criteria for property tax exemptions. So is it my understanding that this all will also potentially impact the amount of money that would come into a city for new construction?
I, I remember seeing that, but I, I think that gets into things that don't affect us, if I remember right.
Okay.
I read it pretty thoroughly, going over stuff that would affect us more than other things.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like everybody's kinda on board with going attached?
Definitely. With, and breezeways do not count.
Right.
Common, a common wall has to be shared.
Okay, I just put no breezeways exclamation point, exclamation point in my notes. That way, when I'm explaining to the Council, I remember to yell it at the top of my voice. No breezeways. Okay. So now let's talk about everybody's favorite topic, parking. This is the one I know you're just gonna love. So, current standards, here at the top half, more or less, our standards say two spaces per unit, whether it be a detached or attached single-family dwelling unit, whether it be a manufactured home. For apartments, if you have a two-bedroom plus or two, two-plus bedrooms, it's two units. And then a duplex is two spaces per unit, which means a total of four. Now, what the state's gonna do to us is they're gonna say we cannot allow any more than two spaces per duplex. So it cuts our standards in half. And, and that's, that's our cap. We cannot require more than that. But then if we did nothing, let's say we, like I said at the beginning, we just sat around and, well, we'll just let whatever happens, happens. If the MODO takes over, then we cannot require any parking at all. Now, the choice here is zero, one, or two spaces. I'm assuming the Planning Commission is gonna recommend two, but this is your chance to prove me wrong.
Yeah, keep it in your dreams.
I, so you're saying two?
Two, two, yes.
Yeah. No surprise there. And I, I'm, and I'm guessing at this point, your opinion is to adopt their own rules and not go with the MODO?
Definitely.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, so parking. And when we talk about parking, we get to talk about driveways. And I wish Council Carlson was here, because some of this talks about her. some of this talks about her concerns over the years, but oh, well. So there's two pictures here, and these are intentional pictures. Now, this one at the top. You notice these red curbs, ah, no parking. So that's something. And then, and that's from somewhere somewhere else, actually looks like it might be oceanfront property. But then the one below is a is a more local example. And what do you see going on there? I see a driveway approach, but then I see a curb. But then I see a driveway beyond that curb. Curb jumping.
Yeah, basketball court, that's not a driveway.
That's right.
That's right.
Just someone happened to be using the basketball court on this day. Yeah, that's good.
Oh, with a water meter in the middle of it.
Okay, so currently, our rules say that one street access point or driveway is allowed per lot. When we're talking about our residential lots. Except for duplexes on corners can have one on each street. Now, these access standards first came to fruition when we adopted our transportation plan. At least the second transportation plan in 2010. And the one thing that we modified since is along local streets, there was a 50 foot standard. And we took that out because it was a little, it was a little difficult on on builders to to implement. So there's a few things we can look at here. And this is one in reaction to this bill and two, just having done this for several years here and kind of observing things. And requiring variances sometime and it's like, well, God, did we really need to do that? So first of all. Which is, I I think, an easy recommendation, but prove prove me wrong. We should make this even as far as duplexes and single family dwellings. And so regardless of it's if it's one or the other on a corner lot, it can have a driveway on each street. And I should mention subject to access spacing requirements. That's still something that would matter. But let's take that conversation further. Something I've been thinking about a lot. A lot of planners talk about streets being an important component of parking management. And that's something that we kind of have to think about if we're going to have duplexes with two spaces. Without a robust transit system like you have in a bigger metropolitan areas. So in red, these are two thoughts. One thought I had was allowing two driveways along streets where no parking is allowed. Now, you still have to meet that access spacing requirement. So let's say you have a larger lot along a collector's street and it has, you know, 200 feet of street frontage. Well, if they can meet the spacing standards and they have a lot that big. Why not let them have two driveway approaches? It's larger, they probably have more stuff, it helps get it off the street. And again, this is where there is no on-street parking. And so you don't have that street to help make up the difference. And then another example, which is it's probably getting extreme because I I think it affects that on-street parking management is allowing two driveways along old classified streets regardless of there's if there's parking or not. And I have some things we can look at to help illustrate and discuss this.
What is a classified street?
Okay, I'll jump to that screen. We'll go back to those exhibits. So here is our classification plan from our transportation systems plan. And basically, we're talking about arterials, collectors and local streets. Arterials here shown in red are intended for through traffic over access. So you're trying to get people in vehicles, on bicycles, motorcycles, scooters and other devices through 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 the system. And because of that, and also because they're often freight routes, you want to minimize your accesses for the functionality of the street. So those are the arterials. Collectors are kind of in between where you have some access, but you're also trying to get people through. Those are shown in blue. And then you have everything else, which is meant for local access. And the way we do it now is when you have an arterial, basically, we're just more picky about where accesses are, how many there are and things like that. And a lot of times, our higher classified streets don't allow on-street parking either. And so I I'll be going back and forth through these slides. But if we talk about one driveway. Now imagine that you had several lots in a row. The advantage of limiting it to one is if you, you know, let's say you have a standard 50 foot lot, 60 foot lot. If you have one driveway. Inevitably, there's going to be nice gaps in between lots where you can have on-street parking. And so there's there's a real legitimacy to that standard if you're thinking about your on-street parking management. Now, when we get to two. If every lot had two driveways. That may eat up your on-street parking. But if you don't have on-street parking allowed. Well, maybe that's not so bad because it helps get more stuff off the street. And then, of course, your corner lot as well.
Is there a standard that only a percentage of the lot can be impervious like asphalt or concrete, so there's still yard?
Yes, there is. Yeah, in our code, typically, it is a 25% standard for residential areas. There's there's two. There's your maximum coverage of buildings and structures. Which is normally 35%, though in the apartment residential zone, it's 50 because it's higher density, more stuff. And then there's your minimum landscaping, which is 25%. Lot coverage, you know, we arm wrestle with developers over lot coverage, eh, fairly often. But the minimum landscape requirements, I've never encountered a a problem with that. It probably will happen someday. But that that's a pretty, pretty low bar to me.
Jacob, I think that, and it's just my opinion. I think that you're already limiting or you're already limited to one parking space per each of the units. You know, for almost definitely that more than half of those duplexes are going to come with two car tenant each. So you're already minus two parking places on site. Plus, if they have visitors, and now you're taking up more street ax parking because you're cutting more driveways. I think I think we're really opening ourselves up to the kinds of problems that the city of Portland has with on-street parking. There is no available on-street parking.
So let let me kind of see where your where the commission is on these items. Now, this first one. Our code allows corner lots with duplexes to have one on each side. Would you with this want to allow that for a single family dwellings as well? And this is the the quarter lot question.
What was the original intent of that? Why, what was the reasoning behind that?
The standards that we have now.
Yes.
Uh, functionality and availability of on-street parking.
Okay.
Greg, were you asking what's the intent of allowing two driveways on a corner lot?
Yes.
I think it's the idea that you can have two access points because you have two street frontages. So you're not creating that on-street parking issue that you would otherwise have if you just had one street frontage with two driveway approaches.
Okay.
Think about it, they've all had a motor home they wanted to hide.
And my thought is, you know, corner lots aren't as common. And so, you know, if you have a corner lot, you have two frontages, you should be able to utilize both with a driveway. And that's the recommendation in black.
Right.
And it would still be subject to access spacing standards. So this this still matters.
Right.
Which is important because usually corner lots, you know, they're on an intersection. So we want to make sure the driveway is far enough away from the intersection.
But I I think that if we go, my opinion, if we go further than that, further than the number one recommendation. And we start allowing two driveways here and there. Ultimately, we're going to have to allow it everywhere else because people are going to come in requesting variances and say, well, somebody on the next block is allowed to do it, why can't I? We better, you know, if if we're going to make different rules for different people, we better have good reasons why we're making those rules different.
And number two would be, well, because you live on a street that doesn't allow any parking at all. And so we we're allowing that potential for a second driveway.
But but see, that's the problem. It doesn't allow for additional parking just because you have an extra driveway. You're not, you're not gaining anything other than the fact that you're taking up potential parking space on the street.
I see, this is, I I think you're missing the point. Allowing two driveways along streets with no on-street parking.
I'm not opposed to two driveways. I think they're going to park on the lawn or whatever if they don't have wherever they have to park. I think it would look better if they at least are parking on a driveway.
How many, how many streets, Jake, do we have that have no parking? Requirements?
You mean no on-street parking?
No on-street parking, yes.
Yeah.
Um, it, that's going to be your skinny streets. Like this one here. And your the very few alley streets that we have, Dubois is a good example where it's a 20 foot street and it probably won't ever be bigger than that. That we do have a few weird streets out there. And the reason, and this is the reason why I thought about this number two. In in a lot of your standard cases, one access per lot makes sense. But there are some weird places in town where, oh, God, just the weird circumstances where there's no parking and it would be insane to try to get more cars in that very narrow right of way. And frankly, I feel bad saying, well, you need a variance for a second driveway, even though in these cases you're trying to get more people off of that narrow right of way. And that second driveway approach. It wouldn't hurt the functionality and in fact, it may help it. And so it's not very common. And and because the spacing standards still apply, let's say we had a standard size residential lot on Sykes. It's still an arterial. So the only way they're going to get two driveway approaches is if they have a particularly large property with a lot of extra uh, street frontage because the the spacing standard on a arterial is it's 100 feet measured from the center on collectors. In an arterial, it's 200 feet. You'd have to have a pretty unusually large property for that to happen. So this number two would not be, it would not, I I don't think it would be terribly common, but just in my experience, seeing some of these weird properties. I I I would see this as helping at least a potential tool or option for people to help with the the parking issue. Number three would probably be chaos, and I I definitely can see your concern on that. I just wanted to throw out there is, you know, the things to think about.
So if we if we took, if we agreed and and made of the recommendation for to include number two. Can the rules the code be written in such a way that is very limiting to just those specific areas that have no on-street parking?
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, I would word that very carefully.
So there would be no wiggle room.
Yeah, one clarifying question. So for the, because the majority of streets we deal with are undersized streets with a really large right of way, you know, gravel on both sides. That's not a street that's determined as no on-street parking. That's a street that's got plenty. Even though it's not developed on-street parking. It's still within the right of way and considered street parking.
Yes, when you have that 20 foot shoulder that everybody uses as parking.
Yeah, okay. So so for number three, that would allow two driveways on those types of streets as well, just.
Yeah, unless unless we put some special language in there, but yes.
Okay. Yeah, two is very limited. I think there's not a lot of risk there.
I think definitely number three opens up too much. Too many cans worms.
Yeah, I I mean, it's good to give you stuff to say no to as well, so.
Well, we're looking for all kinds of ways to say no.
So, and I I don't mean to pressure you into it. I just want you to understand, you know, my thinking on this.
So on your estimate, would you say less than 15% of the city would qualify for number two?
Yes, just shooting from the hip estimate, yes.
Are you gonna mark it none? No on-street parking? Those areas?
Mark it?
Oh, like paint the curb?
Oh.
Carbing?
It's some areas are so narrow, it's pretty clear that the travel, yeah, yeah, I would say not in every case warrants a curb marking.
Everybody doesn't get a choice.
Yeah. Every street's different, you know, some need to be marked because of problems.
Well, the city should be consistent.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And that's why we're not writing the law. I, you know, that's something we'll take care of and write it very carefully. This is the bigger, you know, trying to, how are we steering the ship? So is everybody kind of okay with one and two, not three, that the consensus? Are you uncomfortable with two still?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with two.
I'm good with two, no on three.
No on three. I think we can move on.
And Audrey's video is frozen again.
Oh, no. Can she call in?
It's happened a couple of times.
Can she call in?
She may want to stop her video. Oh. Now she's off.
Her wifi is kicking her off.
Does she have spotty wifi, Sheila?
I think she's just logging back in.
Yeah, we were talking about it earlier. My son's having problems with our. My son's having problems with ours too.
Audrey, you may want to stop video so that you can continue audio. It might be less bandwidth for your wifi. You're on mute.
What difference is stopping video doing?
You're just having to transmit less data. Just the audio is a little bit less, yeah.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with one and two here?
Yes, one and two, but not three.
Okay. Unanimous, Jacob.
Okay.
Better move on quickly.
Oh, Greg.
And so, the other thing that we got to talk about, and this is something Council Carlson has talked to me about for some time, is skinny streets. So we have some skinny street standards. And we have a 20-foot standard and a 26 standard. And they are limited by traffic. And, and this just means about 20 single-family dwellings. And where we've seen these has been cul-de-sacs. If some of you remember the Rich Bailey Development Forest Trails, the one cul-de-sac definitely had less than 20 lots using it. So they're able to use a 40-foot-wide skinny street standard. Now, when we go to the really narrow one, the 20-foot, whoops, which we can see here, no, no parking is allowed at all. Our code talks about the 26 standard, which is also referenced in the fire code. And there it is here, where you have parking on, on one side. So the question though, you know, given this, do we, do we keep allowing these skinny street standards that don't allow parking at all? If our hands are a little bit more tied on requiring parking on the lots themselves?
Well.
And, and this is, this is tough because a lot of planners talk about skinny street standards as a tool for infill development. And a lot of our big properties, even just in the last couple of years, are being subdivided. And so we're going to see more and more weird infill properties. And, you know, do we take those tools away because of our concern about parking? Or do we leave them and cross our fingers?
Well, how do you, how do you, how do you accommodate parking on a 20-foot road, what, right, with?
Well, in that case, you hope that people, either the developer puts the parking in to meet the market. And so that's, you know, you're letting the market decide.
What is the housing tract that's out?
Sorry, go ahead, Audrey.
What is the housing tract that's out on Sykes Road that's got the skinny streets? Do you know what I'm talking about? It's a new.
The Rich Bailey subdivision?
Is that, is where there's no parking and the garbage cans have to go on one side of the street?
Oh, yeah, that's forest trails.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. There's no parking on the street around there because I know when I've been there, we have, they get permission from their neighbors to use any free spot or free driveway. So.
So, so that development used our skinny street standards a little bit, as well as our private road standards, which I didn't get into in this, but the private road standards, well, that's another thing is, you know, what, do we, do we eliminate our skinny street standards that don't allow on-street parking? And then as far as our private road standards, do we make sure our private road standards are wide enough to allow on-street parking? Even though it's private and not enforced by the city? Or, or do we leave it alone?
So you're saying that on a two, a two-lane road, it's already narrow, the possibility of adding at least one side of parking?
We can't do that.
You're not even talking about a, a one-way street, are you?
Which example are you talking about?
The, well, you're talking about allowing potentially parking on these skinny streets.
Well, so this is a standard in our code, this is a standard in our code.
Right.
My question is, do we change our code to prohibit any standard that does not have room for on-street parking?
Yes.
Which means, which means this one would go away.
I say yes.
I say yes.
I do too.
And you would agree with that for the private road standards as well? And so the private road standard spaces basically an access easement to access a variety of properties? Or, or do you even allow that anymore?
No, eliminate it.
I wouldn't allow it anymore. I don't think it should be allowed because I think now we're looking at like Dalton Lake.
And the, the private road standards are interesting because it, it started several years ago with the discussion with the commission. And I should try to find that memo. I, I found a copy of it. I know I put it somewhere. Where the, the skip, it was skip at the time, was asking the commission. And at the time, the commission kind of favored it, but, you know, things have changed. We just have a lot of examples. Uh, so I think everybody, and if you haven't, if I'm wrong, let me know, agrees to eliminate skinny street standards that do not allow on-street parking and then eliminate the private easement access provisions altogether.
Yes.
So what you're saying is that the top example, parking would be allowed on both sides of the street, under your proposal?
I'm saying the top example would not be allowed. It's currently allowed, it would be prohibited because it's a standard that doesn't include any on-street parking.
And I, I don't live in, in St. Helens, I live in Columbia City and I live on the second example. And I can tell you, if people still park on both sides of the street, it's a mess. I live on the other side of Dalton Lake, up on the trail. And people still park on both sides of the street only, even though legally, they're only allowed to park on one side of the street.
And it doesn't, it's not aggressively enforced, obviously, then?
No, it's not.
And I lived on Allen Dale Drive for 10 years and there's not room for two cars to be parked in two lanes of traffic going through.
Well, that's my argument too.
So I agree with everything that was said about these two skinny street standards. The question about the private streets though is, is a little confusing. Mostly because Jacob and I hadn't talked about it. But does that mean that for lots that are landlocked, they have no way to create a private access from the public street?
I'm not prepared to say yes or no on that, just because I don't know enough about it.
Yeah.
That's correct. And actually, let me, let me take a detour from this. So you are correct, Jenny, it would prohibit. And basically, you would be stuck with larger lots in those cases. So the, the, the access easement is a, is a pretty significant tool for infill development. And we will pick on.
You may be able to just bring up the zoning map too, that you have already in the presentation. Wow, that might be too far.
Yeah, I want to show the plat.
Emerald Meadows has a few.
Yeah, Emerald Meadows is probably, forest trails, it's, there's so many lines in it. It's hard to, unless you've looked at it a lot, like we have. Emerald Meadows is a good example, thank you, Jenny. She's working from Colorado, by the way. How's that high-altitude air?
It's been great. It's been in the eighties every day I've been here.
Really?
So, yeah, I escaped the rain that you guys got a couple days ago.
Yeah, we had some pretty crazy thunder and lightning this morning.
Oh, really?
In North County, yeah. Okay, so here is the famous Emerald Meadows, everybody's favorite subdivision.
This has, this has them all. It has every example, the skinny street.
So you have a skinny street here, although it is a skinny street that allows parking on one side.
Yeah.
But where you get into, so the access easements, there's an access easement here for these lots. And then one here for these lots. And then one that goes up to here for this assemblage of lots there. And if we go further into the details, so here are these lots, this little access easement. And one of the things we did is we had a requirement that no parking provisions be put on these because they're, they're not wide at all. So that's, that's the private road to access those. Oops, wrong way. And then, in this case, here's the private road easement for these three lots. And then you have this one straddled in between these lots to serve those.
Fire access too.
Yeah, yeah, this is, there's some removable boards for a, a second way in. So that way they, they didn't have to sprinkle the buildings. So this is an important tool for, to, to get these lots out of there. And, you know, the question is, does this create a situation that creates some discomfort?
I don't think we should get rid of it. I mean, if we're talking about affordable housing, it'd be a whole different picture if they'd had to lose 10 lots or whatever the number could appear, but I just.
It, it allows for more efficient use of that corner.
To get rid of it.
Yeah.
And this is, it's a good example because it's a weird-shaped lot. And so you do have some of those infill tools. You know, this would be a 15,000-square-foot lot. And this one would probably just be two, two or three big lots. Of course, they have this little stub. But anyways, so Jennifer's made her opinion clear. What about the rest of you?
So the options are to keep what we have now or to eliminate it, right?
As far as the, yeah, we're talking about the private road access, which are basically these easements.
And you're saying there's no parking on any of this then, right?
Uh, there's no parking on any of them. I, I guess, so eliminate it or change the standard so there is some on-street parking?
Well, I don't think I would change the standard to allow parking with.
No, it would be widening, widening so that you have travel lanes and parking available.
But you have, but with such a small area, do you have that amount of space that you can widen that? Or do you end up costing so much space that it doesn't become feasible? Because you don't any longer have the lot size available, availability to build that extra house or?
Sure.
Well, there you go. And it's, you know, it's an infill tool.
Well, it's basically, it's basically a way to prevent landlocked residents, is what it is.
There's an old example of this up on Nob Hill.
It's, it's sort of the idea of the old cherry stem. So that you don't landlock a house. I don't think I would change it. And I don't think I would allow parking.
Okay, so Greg is status quo.
I mean, have we gotten a lot of feedback about people being critical that they, there was no parking allowed and the, on the present ones that are in the city?
Um, not with any substance.
I've heard, I've heard complaints, people parking on the end of private, parking their private vehicles on the end of these private easements. Um, like their boat or RV, you know, they live on the end, so they park their vehicle there. But that's, that's probably a couple in my five, four years here.
Yeah. I think one of the things we have to, as a city, I think one of the things we have to keep in mind is that when we talk about parking, we're talking about, we should be talking about vehicle for use in commuting, not for recreational vehicles, not for boats and trailers and everything else. We're talking, especially now that, that parking, that spaces for parking are becoming more and more limited. We can't have every home with a, with a trailer and a motor home and a boat and then try to find extra space for their cars. I mean, it's just ridiculous.
Well, that becomes a non-development code question. And that whether or not you want to recommend the council to create a provision that says no RVs or boats may be stored in yards, which would, we'll, well, we would have to hire a lot of people.
Yeah, I want to see this city council do that.
That, that would be, that would be interesting.
Yeah. And we need.
Need more code enforcement.
Yeah, I was just, well, I was just going to say, we need every police force in Oregon to safeguard the city council members.
Yeah, that would get ugly, I believe. Especially, you know, when we live along the river and there's a lot of, there's a lot of boat people here.
Well, that's just, you know, when, when I build my city, you know.
Okay, so what I'm getting from the group here is get rid of the skinny street standard, the public standard that doesn't allow on-street parking. And then keep, but keep the easement.
I think that's the consensus.
Can you see that, can you see that being a problem when we get into this cluster housing?
Parking or street access?
Just getting rid of the skinny street standard, but those will be private roads, I suppose.
I don't, I don't think so. And now my disclaimer is I haven't researched cottage clusters much. But based on the stuff that I've kind of gleaned, it's one property with several houses on it. And so if, so the, the public street that lets you get to it, if it's a new street, then we want to make sure it's a street that allows parking at least on one side. But the cottage cluster would still need to provide their own driveways, parking, common areas, et cetera, on the property. And so my assumption, because a lot of those amenities would have to be on the property, what we're talking about now wouldn't hurt it. In fact, in the case of Emerald Meadows, where you have maybe a large lot, that may be one of the examples to have a higher and better use instead of dividing it.
Don't give him any ideas.
Yeah, let's get, let's get through this before we go into something else.
Okay, so now, a whole bunch of other stuff.
Oh, for god's sake. Oh, for God's sake. I'm rewriting the Bible.
Pretty close. It's the duplex Bible, Greg. Come on, man, this is historic. This is the end of detached, single-family dwelling for the city of St. Helens, and it's history. So come on, man, you live in history here.
Actually, it's, actually, it's the end of zoning as we knew it.
Yes.
I think it's the end of the word duplex too, now it'll be middle housing.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so just some ground rules. Remember, we need to be clear and objective. You know, the standard can't be, well, if Greg likes it, it can go. That's very subjective. And we can't pick on duplexes. We can't say duplexes have to be pink, everything else can be blue. So setbacks. Now luckily in our R7 and our five zones, they're the same, so no change there. Now, R10, R10 is our lowest density district. And duplexes aren't allowed at all. But the, that zoning district has the most strict yard requirements, 20 feet in the front and back, 10 feet in the sides. So my assumption on that is we would just apply the single-family dwelling standards to duplexes for R10.
Yes.
Yes.
Can we get away with that?
Uh, yes.
Because you know what, you know what Salem is going to do? They're going to come back and they're going to say, well, but in R5 and R7, it's much less. So R10 should be not based on other single-family properties, but on the R5 and R7 code setbacks. I bet you.
I don't think so. I was just saying that you have to treat them the same as you would a single-family residence, so as long as they're applying the same standard.
I hope that's the case. I do.
So that's easy. The AR standard does have greater setbacks for duplexes. And I can tell you what those are. When I started working on this, I, you know, I thought, well, we'll just have to change a couple of things. And then I got into it, I'm like, holy crap.
Might as well throw out the old duplex rules.
Okay, so single-family dwellings have five-foot side yards and then duplexes have 10-foot side yards. So we can make duplexes and single-family dwellings have 10-foot, which wouldn't make sense because then it's more restrictive than the R5, a lower-density district. Or just have duplexes have, meet the single-family dwelling standards. That's probably what I'd recommend, just for clarity, as far as the yard requirements in the AR zone.
That makes sense to me.
That makes sense, yeah.
I would go with that.
And then, just for, just to let you know, if we did nothing and with, with the model code, our 20-foot rear setback would turn into 15. But since we're going to adopt the code, we shouldn't have to worry about that.
There you go.
Okay, lot size and dimension. Now, R10 is 10,000 square foot for detached, single-family dwelling. And a 70-foot lot width. I would assume that we would just apply the same to duplexes.
Yes, if they're going to be in a residential area.
Yes, I agree.
And then, R7, R5 also have greater standards. And we could just bring those back down to the detached, single-family dwellings as well. I can well, let's talk about those, just so you're not making decisions blind. So R7, a single-family dwelling is 7,000 square feet. For a duplex, it's 10,000, except on a corner lot where it's seven. So if we went with the single-family dwelling standard, we would go with 7,000 for both.
That works.
Yes.
Okay. R5 is, is not much different at all. It's 5,000 for dup, no, 5,000 for a single-family dwelling and 5,800 for a duplex. So it's just a difference of 800 square feet. So I think that one's a slam dunk as far as going to the single-family standard.
Yes.
No disagreement there. Now, the apartment residential standard one is interesting. So because it allows a detached, single-family dwelling to go as small as 3,050 square feet. And a detesting or duplex is 5,000. Now, it is our high-density zoning district, and so you expect to see more stuff condensed. This is the one that I read, well, God, I wonder what the planning commission is going to think about this. But if we're going to honor the intent of the code, we would say, just like the others, duplex goes to the single-family dwelling standard and thus would be allowed on a 3,050 square foot lot.
If we didn't do, if we didn't do anything at all on the apartment, what would the state do?
I believe we would have to apply the 350.
So if we apply the 350, what is it now?
350.
Oh, so it's the same thing.
Yeah, we would have to treat them the same.
Right. We really don't have a choice.
Yeah, the only thing would be if you wanted to increase the size for detached, single-family dwellings to like 4,000 square feet and to meet, meet them in the middle. But, you know, I don't.
Have you ever seen a lot get developed at 3050, Jacob?
No.
Me neither.
It's pretty small.
It's tiny.
And, you know, the market, the market may keep that from happening anyways.
What about your other idea? What about going to four?
Yeah.
How much, how much work would that entail?
Um, well, there's two questions. And this is something we can do research on. One, as far as work, that's easy, it's an easy code amendment. I think we would probably do a search for lot sizes with that zoning and see if we have any that are that small. I bet there are not any. And I'm just trying to think if there would be a non-conforming consequence to any current property. So we could, we could say 4,000, just with a little bit of research to make sure we're not negatively affecting a substantial amount of citizens.
I might look at that rather than go down the 3,500. That's awful small.
And it's not 3,500, it's 3,050, 3-0-5-0.
Oh, that's even worse. I mean, that's worse than living in one of those little cracker boxes.
You put a little trailer on it.
Yeah.
All right, so.
More research before we say what we want.
Yeah, I would like, can we, can we earmark that for more work?
Yeah, and like I said, this is the first pass, so, and I know it's a whole lot of stuff.
Right.
So let me just take some notes here.
It just seems like it's kind of plucked from air to me, like we feel like we need to change it, so let's pick that simple solution without any basis.
Sure.
Well, we only have one, two options, change it ourselves or let the state change it.
Yeah.
Whose bright idea was this anyway?
Um, Speaker Kotek.
No doubt the developers have a role in this behind the scenes.
Maybe. I, I mean, part of it, you know, for the last several years, it's been a lot of discussion about affordable housing and it's, and we've seen the legislation continue through the state, you know, last year we had to amend our ADU rules. But this, this one's pretty significant.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there definitely in Portland will not, no longer be any historical, you know, mansions, McMansions up on the hill because everybody will, all the developers will be tearing them down, building up these duplexes or whatever they call middle, medium homes.
Okay, so we'll kind of look into that a little bit more. The good thing is building height, lot coverage, minimum landscaping, it's all the same, so we don't have to change that, thank God.
Good.
Um, and we're going to start to get into some just FYI things now. So if your minds are starting to hurt, you can start to relax them a little bit. So density calculations, and I'm kind of, I'm glad about this just from a clarification standpoint, because there has been some developments where I go, oh, God, they could have some duplexes there, which could be higher density as far as, you know, determining densities allowed and other things. And the, the statute disallows using duplexes for density calculations. So that's just something we need to change in our chapter. You'll see that with the code amendments, but it's not something that you need to worry about. It's just something we have to do. In our wetland chapter, it references single-family dwellings. And actually, back in the earth removal case, this was in 2014, for those of you remember, duplexes came out in some of the internal discussions, and here it is. So wherever it references single-family dwellings, we'll have to say duplexes too. And that's, for example, if you have a lot that's substantially encumbered by a wetland, and it's been like that for a long, long time, someone comes in for a permit, we have to let, we have to allow them some economic use of their land. And our code talks about, uh, single-family dwellings, and we would just have to say duplexes too.
Or middle housing.
Or middle housing, yes. Our ADU chapter, we won't need to mess with that since you chose to keep duplexes as attached. And I'm assuming that council's going to agree with you on that. Uh, there is one thing, I, I do want to add a no more than two dwellings language clause. And I, I think, you know, it would be kind of inferred otherwise, but it's, it's sometimes it's nice to have tools in the code for those weird things that come up. And that's just one of those things where, you know, I want some extra stuff in the code, just to say two, two max.
Yeah, two max. Beyond two, you're going back to the cluster.
Well, I think that's very smart.
But a cluster what? That's the question.
That's it. Hey, it's Columbia County. I should be able to get six or eight here on, you know, if I use the backyard, the front yard and the side yard.
Go for it, Andre.
Yeah, six easily with a swing set. Four cars up, four cars up on blocks with no wheels on them.
Now you're talking my neighborhood.
Hey, I got to cover this all.
Okay, caretaker residence. This is something in our industrial zoning. And this is a place where we can specify single-dwelling units only. We, we don't have to say duplex in this case.
Also, so if I don't want a duplex in my neighborhood, I have to become a caretaker.
You have to change your zoning to industrial. You have to establish an industrial use and then apply for a caretaker permit. So good, good luck with that process.
Hey, I'm growing a marijuana patch in the back, so.
Well, thank God you're in the county.
That's right. Don't get any ideas.
We've got benefits, Greg.
So far.
So now that we're getting rambunctious, we can talk about design standards. Now, I have a feeling that this is something that the council is going to be a little resistant to because we don't have design standards currently. And there's been a little bit of discussion here and there about it, and this is certainly an opportunity to talk about it. So one idea was for, for the, the units, you have at least one main dwelling unit entry facing a street.
Yes, please.
I agree.
What are you going to have them facing the sky?
Look at Sixth Street, the new townhomes, they're, you're going to look at their crappy backyards. Nobody takes care of them.
Now, in most cases, they will face the street, but there's, there are sometimes where it doesn't. So this isn't going to affect a lot of them, but it could come in handy. And it seems, it seems like there's support on that.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
Well, just the, where it says, if a corner lot, the street that.
Yeah, so good eye. So not all streets are created equal. Um, what if it abuts Gable Road and a local street? Do you want it to face the higher classified street? Or does it matter as long as it faces a street that's actively used?
Good question. I, what if you, what if you fit it in with the way the neighborhood, I mean, if all the other houses on the block are facing one street, why would you have the other one turned?
Oh, so you just, you just take the predominant pattern?
Right.
That's a good idea.
I mean, how else would you make the decision unless you, you base it, I mean, you have to base it on something.
Yeah, the, the, one idea I had was just street classification. But I, I like the idea that, you know, there's a precedence pattern. We would just have to write it so that it's clear and objective. And, you know, that's something we can kind of work on as we go forth.
Right. I mean, I've seen, I mean, I've seen some weird houses driving through some of the streets where every street, every house is facing one street except one house, and it just looks weird.
That could work against us the other way though. I mean, take Sixth Street and Columbia as an example. So the new townhomes, the backyards are going to be facing Sixth Street. Imagine if there was a corner lot. And we wouldn't necessarily want that corner also to have the backyard in the same direction. You probably want, I, I think there's some valid point to making it for the classification of the street.
And in other areas of the code too, Jacob, doesn't street also count private access? So in Dan Hatfield's situation, that accessway is considered also a street?
Yes.
So facing them towards the access would comply with this, even though you've got streets on two other sides too. At least the classified street rule.
Yeah. So, and, and we don't have to figure it all out now, we can kind of explore classification as well as predominant patterns.
Well, what other design standards were you thinking of?
Well, another one that we, we've been talking about here and there, and Counselor Carlson and I have talked about are glazing standards. Now, and that just means windows. And, um, Matt Hasty, he's helped us with, um, some of our transportation growth management grants, he's with Angelo Planning Group. And about a year ago, um, I was talking with him at a conference and I asked him about glazing standards, and he noted that they're not common, and he pointed to the city of Dundee that has them, and I looked them up yesterday, but they're for commercial properties, and the idea is that you have, you know, display windows along commercial fronts, so it would be a matter of minimum percentage, minimum size, and I don't know if there's a lot of examples out there.
I think Portland does it on their ADUs, don't they? I think one window facing front that's a minimum size.
Maybe, that's something we can look at, I'm glad you pointed that out. But that would be the other idea is a glazing standard. But I, but we, one, to get it past the council, it needs, it should be simple and easy to, to achieve, and the, and chances are, if you have a door, you're going to have a window that comes along with it.
I would hope so.
So I, my initial thought is the door standard is one that would, um, cure most woes, but exploring glazing standards is another thing we could potentially do.
I would almost say that we need to pull out the design standards and look at them separately because we're also not only talking about duplexes, and we're now talking about detached, single family dwellings, because the standards that we set for duplexes is also going to have to be for detached, single family dwellings, right?
That's correct, it would, it would apply to both, and so.
I think we need to really think this carefully through because this could, you know, we don't want to be too subjective, we want to have certain, I mean, we want to be able to have reasons why we make the decisions we make.
And, and ideally, it should be simple for everybody to understand, and my fear about the windows is you start getting to, it's just a, it can keep going down into a sea of details, and then what do you, what do you end up with?
That's exact, that's exactly right.
That's, that's the beauty of the, the main entry is, well, everybody knows what the main entry is.
Plus, if we're looking at design standards, I also, you know, I mean, I want to look at some things that are really important that we should be looking at rather than the, you know, the minor things.
Well, and there is some precedence to design standards, I mean, we have them for accessory structures, we have them for auxiliary dwelling, and it's already, um, and auxiliary dwelling in it specifically point out the number of entries you can have on the, on the front facade, or the one facing the street. So it's not like our code has none, it's just none for single family dwellings and duplexes.
Yeah, and I definitely think that, you know, all along we should have had, uh, design standards for single family dwellings.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I worry that if we don't do it now, it's never going to happen, and now is the right time to talk about it, since we're, since we are amending housing, it's, it's an appropriate time, I think, but I agree, I, I don't want it to get complicated, and
No.
we should have reasons, yeah.
Yeah. Definitely look at the main things, important thing. Jacob, can you, can you sort of give the planning commission over the next couple, month or so, some examples of what some of the other cities of our size might be doing for design standards?
Maybe, and we'll talk about, we'll talk about the calendar, uh, soon.
Okay, soon, soon will be tomorrow.
Uh, no, and as part of this presentation.
No, I'm talking about we're going.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
In reading this where it says at least one main dwelling, is there, does there need to be a definition of what main is?
And I'm, I'm using very simple terms for the purposes of the presentation.
Okay.
Once we start writing code, I mean, that's when we start getting nitpicky on words.
Okay.
I would probably use a principal dwelling, and that's defined in our code.
Okay.
But I, I didn't want to be too Cody in this case, especially because this presentation is going to the council as well. So let me just finish with my notes.
Andre, are you still there?
I'm here.
Hi, okay, just want to make sure.
Hey, it's really nice, I had a nap, full cups of coffee and made a phone call.
You're being so productive.
We should all turn our video off.
Okay, so this is the last slide. So.
I wish that was all true.
This is, so when I got, when I read through all this stuff and looked at our code, I'm like, wow, we have a lot of dissecting to do, and, and it all goes back to, you know, our code was born out of single family dwelling zoning, and so, you know, there's a lot of little things we have to change here and there. Um, and so this is where we start talking about time, so we need to have code in place effective by June thirtieth of next year.
Now, there is no June thirty first. June only has thirty days.
That was probably a mistype, but the end of June. Um, and it could be the twenty ninth, the twenty seventh, it, it doesn't affect the rest of the schedule. So, if we, if we backtrack the, the latest that we need to have a draft code, which doesn't have to be a hundred percent, but it should be, you know, eighty-five percent, is February third. Now, that's good, because typically, the holiday season is a good time to sit down and, you know, type, type, figure, figure it out. Um, and it leaves a little bit of a window to explore stuff. Um, but not a, a huge window, and especially balancing all the other things we're doing. So, and I kind of figured the design standard one would be one that could just kind of grow, it's, you know, it's a, it's an onion, you keep taking the layers off, and you just have more onion. Um, so we'll just, we'll have to kind of play that, um, by ear. But between Jenny and I, we can probably get something. And I, you know, I, ideally, I don't want to push it off, hopefully get something in there now, but we'll just, we'll have to, we'll have to see.
Well, I think we, I mean, I think we made a great start today, tonight.
Yeah, it's a bummer not full presence of all the commissioners, though, because it does start us over a little bit.
Yeah, they, were you, we may ask them to watch this, so they have the context for later meetings.
Yeah.
Because there could be a lot of repeat questions, and, and I think, just knowing the commission, I think they would agree with probably most of this stuff, a lot of it's probably, you know, how, what direction the dialogue would go, especially with the design standards. But we're going to be talking about that more anyways, so anyways, duplexes, that is in our near future, and I thank you for putting up with this presentation.
Yeah.
I am going to.
I think it was very, very informative. Once again, the state of Oregon is becoming California all over.
Oh, yeah.
All right, anything more on that topic, Mr. Jacob?
Uh, no, is my screen still shared?
Yes.
Zoom, yeah. Now we're in a map of Emerald Meadows.
Uh, click the, click the, go back to your Zoom again, and then you'll have to like go to this little bar at the top of your screen, Stop Share should show up.
There it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda, we always went from four to six, so planning director decisions, I don't know what number five was, but.
It's the mystery, the mystery item, use your imagination.
I guess, so, uh, any discussion on the planning director decisions? Hearing, hearing none, uh, planning department activity report. Anything on that?
Uh, does anybody have questions about what you may have read?
Can't think of any.
No.
It's just been, been, been busy. I have not been busy.
Anything that anybody wanted to bring up? Not on the agenda? I have one comment. You know, uh, last month I complimented the city for what a fantastic job they did on Gable Road. But now I come back with a request, or maybe a question. What, how does the city decide how many, um, pedestrian crossings they have on, um, a, a street?
I don't know.
Well, beyond the high school on Gable Road, between the high school, the north end of, or I guess would be the west end of the high school, all the way up to the, um, where Gable meets Columbia Boulevard, there is one lighted, uh, pedestrian crossing.
Right.
And I think, I mean, just going down Columbia Boulevard from the cutoff from, uh, Gable Road, all the way down to Highway thirty, or even, even, uh, Vernonia Road, you have three. I think that you need more than just one pedestrian crossing on Gable Road, which is such a, you know, I mean, you have all those, uh, apartment complexes, you have all those houses along there, uh, more and more people are walking. Um, it just makes sense at the, at the brother section, um, to the west, that you would have another, uh, street, pedestrian crossing. Anyway, something to, you know, I would like to raise to the powers that be to at least examine the possibility.
Yeah, that, that would have been a design with our, uh, because it's a county road, so the county took the lead with input from our engineering department. And, um, you know, as planners, we had an occasional question, um, thrown to us about trees and some driveway approaches and stuff like that, but we weren't heavily involved. And, and Jenny, wasn't that addressed in the Chicken Cross the Road ordinance? I just had to make that up, yeah, we, I, we can, uh, we can bring it up.
Wah wah.
But it is, it is a county road, right, so ultimately the county would be responsible.
Yeah, but I think they're going to be wanting to transfer it to us, um, fairly soon, I, I believe that's what's going to happen, usually once it's built to our serving standard, you go, hey, city, you want to take it over?
Yeah.
But right now it is county.
I don't think they want that corner of Gable and Columbia Highway, though, I mean, county's got it now.
You don't think the city wants it?
I don't think the city wants it, that's been redesigned so many times.
I have one FYI item, next Wednesday at the council meeting, the work session, Jacob and I are giving our planning department report to city council. This is like a newer thing that we're doing regularly, and so if you want to watch us talk about the planning department and its updates, there are a lot of them.
Is this your annual report?
It's different than the planning commission annual report, this is a newer, um, it's been the council's desire to do a strategic planning exercise where each department has goals and missions that they're trying to meet, and so um, we are complying and doing a presentation on all of our efforts to meet those goals.
This is noon on Wednesday?
One o'clock on the twenty first, and you can watch it after the fact, it'll be uploaded.
I've watched it, actually, after the fact is better, because you can kind of go through it and watch the parts you want to.
Fast forward, yeah, so a couple of days, it usually gets uploaded.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's going to be at one, but it'll be sometime one or after, however the agenda's worked out.
How much time do they give you for your report?
Twenty minutes.
Those meetings go on forever, Greg.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
Ever.
Yeah, we're instructed.
As they want.
We are instructed to be, uh, brief.
Yeah, right, nothing more.
So it won't be like tonight's discussion, but tonight we had a lot of things to cover, so.
Depends on how many questions they ask, too.
I thought you were very well, Jacob and Jenny.
Yeah, that was a good presentation, thanks, Jacob.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, hanging in there with us, and, uh,
Well, if I hear, uh, if, unless there's something else, uh, we can adjourn.
Yep, just, uh, on a note, you guys, everybody keep their guard up, we've had two positive, uh, COVID people come into our office in the last two weeks.
Wow.
One was a visitor from Seattle, and luckily we were all wearing masks and stepped outside very quickly. The other was, uh, agent brought a photographer into the office, and then she had tested positive, so um, I haven't been spending a lot of time there, but the people that were, had to get, we, you know, we got, they got tested or negative, but just wear your masks, please.
Oh, yeah, good, yeah, thank you. We, we do have some good news, and Jenny, uh, I don't want to steal your thunder, but something happened this week that the planning commission would be interested in? Or the historic landmarks commission would be interested in?
Um, are you, what, what, you should probably say it.
No, that was last week. Archie Forum?
Oh, yeah, right, the Bennet Building, um, we had our site visit with Archie Forum, um, and we feel like we're in good hands, so they made a bunch of measurements on the windows and door, um, and they're going to prepare a design of the facade that has multiple options, and, um, yeah, we're, we're really excited, they're really professional, too, like we're excited.
They just did the people's house, I think.
Yes, they did, in Columbia City, yeah.
All right.
So we haven't forgotten about the Bennet Building.
It keeps me awake at nights. All right, everyone.
We have a building, I hadn't even noticed the name on it before. That restaurant, CDC or whatever it is, or CBC, Columbia Brewing, what, I guess that's in the Muckel Building, what's the building to the left?
That's, uh.
Muckel.
That's in the Muckel, then there's the, where Gracie's was, that's the, if you didn't ask me, I could tell you.
Jacob's like.
I never noticed that there was a name on it.
It starts with an A, maybe?
It's like, isn't there two names to it, it's the something, something building?
Morgus, it's the Morgus Building. I, I believe it's the Morgus Building.
There you go.
Yeah, no, I hadn't noticed it, and I'd take the dog down and walk on the waterfront there, and all of a sudden one day, it's like, huh, knew there was a muckle, where did this one come from?
The muckles have really neat points.
I just, Jenny's rushing to get back to the slopes.
Yeah, I've got my skis ready, right?
All right, well, thank you, everyone, stay safe.
Yes, thank you.
Have a happy Halloween.
Yes, thank you.
Into you.
Bye now.
Bye bye.